Good evening. Today is Monday, August 13th. I would like to call the first meeting of the month of August to order. My name is Jeff Matthews, President of Speedway Town Council. I'd like to welcome the others that are with me this evening. To my far right, Counselor Eileen Fisher.
Good evening.
Counselor Jason Delisle.
Good evening.
Vice President David Lindsey.
Good evening.
Counselor Gary Rakes.
Good evening.
Town Manager Jacob Blaisdell.
Good evening.
And Town Attorney Bob Clutter.
Evening.
The agenda has been posted and we are going to be following that this evening. First item on the agenda is the pledge allegiance. Would you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, approval of town council meeting minutes dated July 9th, 2018. Those were distributed. Any questions, corrections? Hearing none, those will be approved as presented. Item number three, the approval of the memorandum for the July 9th, 2018 executive session. Those two were distributed. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, those two will be approved as presented. Item number four, approval of temporary road closure for the zombie run on Friday, October 26th. Michelle, take it away.
Good evening. I'm here representing the Tanya Isaac Foundation. We are planning the fourth annual zombie fun run to benefit the foundation. It will be Friday, October 26th. The race will start at 7:00 PM. We're going to use the same route that we used last year. It seemed to work really well. And this year, we're really excited because we think it'll be paved, completely finished. So, that makes it a little easier on the runners. The only thing that changes, I gave you a printout of the race course. On the backside shows a blow up of the change and it's at the start-finish line. We are partnering with Bigwood Speedway. They are going to host a big after-party for us with special zombie drinks in their little beer garden area. So, we'd kind of like to move the start-finish line closer to their building just to keep people off the road when it comes in, bring people into that area. So, we would like to close the parking lane and then that southbound lane from 10th to 11th Street until the completion of the race, starting probably about 5:00 PM for packet pickup and registration. And we're expecting that the last, if we get some walkers, I would think 8:30 would be the very latest. And this also ties in with Crallween, which starts the same night at 8 o'clock. So, that'll free up parking for folks coming to Main Street for that event as well. I have met with Trent and Sam Alexander. Sam has overseen this event twice before and they both signed off and said they don't see any problems with the route or the start-finish line. Any questions?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the closure of lanes and facilitation of this event as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the temporary road closure for the zombie run on Friday, October 26th. Are there any questions from the audience? Any from council?
Michelle, I have a quick question. So, has this always been for Tanya or has it been other each year? Is it somebody different or is it different?
The first year we did it, I believe it was for Relay for Life. And then the past couple of years, it has gone to the foundation.
Anything else? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes 5-0.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item number five, approval for road closure for hops and flip-flops on Saturday, August 18th. Lee O'Connor. Hi, Lee.
Hey, how are you guys?
Great.
I'm Lee O'Connor with RaceMaker Productions. We're the event management company that handles hops and flip-flops. It's owned by the Speedway Running Club itself. Proceeds go to the Trails Association. I believe this is the fourth year. I should have looked at that before we came. We're doing the same course that we used for Taco Run Indy in May. So, we're basically shutting down Gilman around 4:00 AM. Just kind of start setting up our start-finish line. The course goes Gilman to Allison Way to 10th Street, Lynn Hurst. There's a little out and back on Speedway Avenue and then hops on the trail to Main Street and then south on Main Street in the northbound lane. It's a rolling closure. Race starts at 9:00 AM. So, we're 8:45-ish start the closures. Aside from Gilman, which is again, is closed around 4:00 AM. And we do the rolling closure throughout the race. We should be clear by 10:15 AM. And everything else is contained at Daredevil for the rest of the fun and festivities. That's about it. We, additional certificate, we're sending to Michelle. So, you guys have that on file. This is in Town of Speedway. I think that's everything. Any questions?
Lee, the event continues to grow, so that's great. How many people do you expect to participate?
This year for hops, I think we're going to be just over 300. So, it started out at 80, I think, a few years ago and it's grown. Taco Run in May, we had 650. We capped it and sold it out. So, it was fun as well. So, we think it'll probably double looking at 2019. Fun events.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the lane closures as presented for hops and flip-flops on Saturday, August 18th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the road closure for hops and flip-flops on Saturday, August 18th. Any questions or comments from the audience? Any additional comments from council? Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Item number six, approval of road closure for the NASCAR haulers parade on September 7th. Lauren?
Hello. My name is Lauren Gudati. I'm representing Indianapolis Motor Speedway. So, want to talk about the hauler parade. We've been doing this event now, Duroff and I were just talking. Can't remember if it's been between eight to 10 years. So, it's been quite a while since, definitely before I was there. The only real change this year is just going to be the date. So, obviously with Brickyard now moving to September, we're looking at Friday, September 7th. So, the request is for road closures along Main Street from 10th Street to 16th Street. Really, our footprint's going to remain the same. We're going to utilize what is now Harding's parking lot for all of our fan activities. And then, of course, we'll have the hauler staged over at Allison Transmission. They'll load in along Main Street, side by side. And that's kind of it. So, anticipating crowds anywhere from 3,000 to 5,000. Certainly having driver engagement this year has really helped pique public interest and our fan interest. But like I say, it's really going to be pretty similar to what we've done in years past.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the hauler event as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the road closure for the NASCAR hauler parade. Are there any comments from the audience? Any from council?
What time, do we have a time?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it'll, we'll start road closures at 3:00. They should go until about 8:30. Haulers will typically load out at 8:00. So, if they're out faster, we'll get roads open faster.
Anything else? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 5-0 passes. Thank you, Lauren. Item number seven, rezoning petition 2018-0N-077 for 5999 Crawfordsville Road. One more nine in there. Jacob?
Mr. President, so we received the rezoning petition for what is 5999 Crawfordsville Road. For those not familiar with it, it's kind of at that weird, it's that weird kind of triangle parcel where Crawfordsville and Cunningham Road connect and then up to Parkwood into the shopping area. So, the front half of that building that sits there on the corner with Dualton, I think right now it's also Young America Insurance is there. The front half of that building is technically zoned for D5, which is a dwelling zoning. And I'm not familiar with the history of, it must have been residential at some point and just never got switched to the obvious commercial use that it is right now. So, what's been happening is as the businesses there change and they want to adjust their sign, they have to go get a zoning variance. It's, if they were in a commercial variance, what they're requesting to do wouldn't be an issue. But putting up a big sign in a dwelling zone area obviously is a problem. So, they've got to go before the BZA every time. And this time, BZA asked, hey, could you maybe just fix the problem instead of us just constantly dealing with the symptom and this continuing to kick back to us? Clearly, this is a commercial zoned area. I don't envision anybody wanting to put a house up there. So, they've started the process, which of course starts with the county, the city of Indianapolis. And that gets pushed to the town to determine whether or not we would like to have a hearing on it. And so, what we're actually hearing tonight is asking the council for a decision of whether or not you would like to go ahead and hold a hearing, which would mean that we would need to advertise it, post it, have a public meeting, have a conversation, discuss, you know, what's going on, why. Or you could make a decision tonight to go ahead and not have a hearing. It's, it kind of puts it on a different, technically it then goes back to the city for determination if we do not appeal it. Or is there a technical word for this, Bob, that I'm not looking, that I don't have?
That's correct. If no parties or remonstrators appeal it, it will stay on the expedited calendar. And so, then it will just be approved. But any remonstrators or other interested individuals can call it down. And so then, at that point, it would come back for a public hearing.
So, if you, if the council decides, no, we're not going to have a hearing, it kind of puts it on a fast track for approval. If we want to have a hearing and then the council would vote against the change, then it kind of follows a more laborious path downtown. So, with that, it's, I guess the motion would be to either hear or not hear. You can vote accordingly.
So, basically, we're either waiving the hearing process or we are...
Essentially, yeah. You're essentially saying that you're in support of the petition to have that parcel rezoned to the commercial.
So, to stay within Roberts rules, to have significant discussion on this, we need to have a motion, right? But I'm not sure which way to make a motion because I have questions that, that... So, I'll ask as it relates to that. So, if there are improvements we'd like to see that come along with the signage and other things that the reason they're doing this anyway, they're going to downtown for that purpose, are there things that we can ask them to do as part of this on the fast-track process to not appeal it? Or should we actually hear them, you know, have a hearing and see them and ask them to make some specifics?
Some specific commitments that you would like the petitioner to make? Yes, you can make those as part of your motion for an expedited.
Okay. I want to have some, I think we'll end up having some discussion on that.
Yeah, and assuming that they are in agreement, they say, okay, yes, we'll do A, B, and C, then it'll stay on the expedited calendar. If they're not in agreement, then you would have a hearing on it.
So, I don't know if anybody else has any questions before I make a motion. So, I'd make a motion that we approve it subject to improvements being made at the request of council, which we can discuss in a moment and amend this motion for a fast-track process. Does that make sense?
So, approve it...
Approve it subject to our discussion.
No hearing.
Yes, approve it with no hearing.
I will second. Second.
Okay. So, it has been moved and seconded to waive the hearing process with improvement stipulations? Can I say that?
Yeah. Typically, there are commitments that the petitioner would agree to.
Commitments. Are there any questions from the audience? Probably so. Council?
I would like to ask a question, Mr. President.
Please. Please do.
To our attorney. If we fast-track this and it moves to the C3, will they then have to come back to our zoning to get approval for any signage or anything that they do then?
They will if it is outside of the permitted C3 signage parameters. So, I don't remember those off the top of my head, but there's a certain size of sign that's permitted as of right in a C3 district. So, if they wanted something bigger, then they would come back to the BZA saying, we would like a development standards variance because the, for instance, the sign we're permitted is 80 square feet and we want 100 square feet or something like that.
So, looking at the C3 to the east of this, that would match everything to the east. So, the standards for the east are going to be the same for the west if this is fast-tracked?
Correct. That's correct.
And then if they want anything above that, then they would come back to the BZA?
Yes, the Speedway BZA. Correct.
And so, that's why the BZA is utilizing this as the correction, sort of effective approval instead of, hey, you know, what you're requesting to do, it's fine within a commercial zoning. So, why don't we just make this commercial zoning instead of always having to do a special approval through the BZA process? Because obviously the sign's too big for a residential area.
Sure.
So, with that being said, I don't, my opinion, I don't see that we need to make any stipulations to it because it's going to be C3. The building, I mean, three quarters of the building is already C3.
It'll be the same as surrounding parcels, right?
Correct.
I guess so where I was going with this, now that we kind of have some of the legalities understood. This building is, it had a coffee shop in it for about 20 years. The tool rental company or tool repair company's been there for probably 25 or more years. But the building itself continues to decline. And the owner, which is probably the same owner as always, I'm guessing here, they've done nothing really significant to improve the building. When the coffee shop was there, there was always this parking lot fight between the two tenants about spaces. And so, storage, somewhere along the line, the tool rental company put up signs that have since worn off. I mean, there's nothing, virtually nothing on the sign itself. It's just a piece of metal on the wall. And that's, then the new tenant, the insurance broker that's come into that space has put up a temporary sign that is just nailed up or screwed up on the wall as a piece of vinyl with eyelets and that's what's up there as a sign. And I'm sure that C3 requires them to put certain types of signs and some other things. But I'd like to see some things done with the building to bring it up to a certain standard. And that's the types of things that I was asking about. Whatever C3 says in terms of the pullout in the parking lot with the sign that's on it and it's lit and it has the typical things that a retailer would have, fine. I mean, whatever that C3 calls for. But in this case, the building just continues to decline and the tenants just keep kind of doing the same thing. To me, it's like we've been spending a lot of our town's resources to improve the area. We have an opportunity here to have a building owner bring it up to what we're trying to do with other buildings and as a stipulation for changing this, I'd like to see us take some action in that way.
But the question is, do we have the legal ability to do that?
That's, that's what I'm asking, that's what I was trying to get at.
I think that, when we talk about rezoning from D5 to C3, there's obviously a whole different set of parameters for that C3 zoning.
There are. The financial commitments that you're referring to, Mr. Rakes, are a little bit more problematic. They, for instance, you could request that, you know, if you rezone it to a C3, that it excludes certain uses or be restricted to certain other reasonable uses. The request for financial commitments can be problematic for an owner because what are you asking for? You know, new walls, new windows, new lighting, all of those things cost a lot of money and just kind of open-ended improvements is difficult to quantify. Now, I do know, I was actually at the BZA meeting when the insurance provider that's there now presented. And that was one of the issues that came up. And you had mentioned the temporary sign. And that was not what he wanted to put up. But he said, I've already leased the space. Can I put something up temporarily to let people know I'm there? If and until this is approved and I can put up a more permanent sign. And the one he had actually presented to the BZA was a much more permanent, normal-looking sign. So, that becomes a little bit more difficult when you're asking for specific financial commitments from a petitioner.
Yeah, specifically, there's a door on the west, on the east side of the building that's rusting away. I mean, it is, it looks terrible. And it's, at some point, it's going to fall off the hinges and, you know, and have holes in the door that it looks and is, just doesn't parallel what we're doing in the area. Signs that are on sides of the building that you can't read. They're just a metal two foot by three foot or one foot by three, two foot, whatever that is. They have nothing on it. It's just simple things that a building owner, you know, look at other people sitting in our audience who own buildings, who work hard to take care of their property and rent their buildings out. This building owner, who I don't know who that is, so if I'm offending them, I'm sorry. But to me, they've had a building for a long period of time. It's had virtually no reinvestment. And they have tenants that are paying them rent. And at this point, it seems like they should bring the building up a little bit from what it is. Simple things. I'm not talking new windows or new this or that, just some very basic things.
I agree. But for this particular instance, this is specific to that insurance, well, that portion of the building. I think you're more, you're referencing the property owner. So, that could be something as far as code.
I don't know if code enforcement has legs for that.
Since he's sitting back...
Well, he's got one good foot, so I don't know if he's got...
Joe, you don't have to get up. Was what Counsel Rakes referring to, is that under your, what you could take a look at? Is that correct?
John, Mr. Merritt and myself could take a look at that. We can make the provisions for that. Just to let you know, they did reroute that here within the last, I think it was last year. The owner did just redo that. So, as far as if there's any improvements that need to be done to the property, if it's starting to have issues like Mr. Rakes said, we'll be more than happy to look into it. That's not a problem.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Do we need another motion or are we good? I think we're good, right?
Depending upon what the thought of you all is, the motion that was seconded is for...
Subject.
Subject to the commitments.
And we have no commitments, right? Or do we?
So, I will amend my motion, as I said I probably would anyway, to simply have our code enforcement, building inspection employees, work with the owner to see what they can do to try and bring some of those things along. No strings attached to that, but just as a caveat to that our staff work with them and encourage them to just make some simple things that make the building a little more attractive.
So, just so that we're clear.
Specifically to those things I talked about. Rust it outdoor, dealing with the signs on the side.
If I can just say one thing, I just think we need to make a motion to either pass it down to the city or not. We've already mentioned our code enforcement to have him take a look at it. I don't think we need to include that within a motion to have them look at it.
Correct.
Okay, so...
So, if, will you give a motion on the table?
I'll retract my motion.
Okay.
Because I'm going to vote no on the issue. And I, it's, I fully support everyone. Everybody has an opinion, but I will retract my motion and we can start over.
So, then I make a motion that we move forward on petition 2008-0N-077 to move it to the city to have them...
No hearing.
No hearing here.
I second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to waive the hearing process.
Correct.
So, now I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes 4-1. Okay. Item number eight, ordinance 13-06, an ordinance amending town code of Speedway Chapter 13.20 regarding water utility service charges and penalties. Jacob, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, this is an ordinance to amend. For avoidance of doubt, this has nothing to do with the utility rates that folks pay for water. These are different service charges and specifically more on the penalty side. So, one thing that the ordinance does is it increases the initial hookup fee. Currently, it's $20. We would like to see that raised to $25, just reflecting the cost of labor and having somebody go and do that. And while we're looking at this chapter, that was an item that stuck out that we would want to adjust. The bulk of what this ordinance is doing though is later on. And what we're trying to do is provide more of a disincentive to do an illegal connection. So, there are ways, the people that are more inclined than I am can, if their water is shut off, they can find a way around the meter or turn it back on. And it's a challenge to catch that. Right now, it's just a flat $100 fee penalty every time that happens. We would like to see that raised and escalated for repeat offenders. So, if you do it once, it remains $100. Thereafter, it would go to a $250 fine. And on the third time and incidences thereafter, it would go to $500. Just to, again, avoid doubt, this is not an impact folks whose water is turned off because for failure to pay and then needs to be hooked up. That fee will remain $30 in instance. This is just for people who, whose water is shut off and then they intentionally mess with it to circumvent the process to then get water for free, which, you know, there's a cost to that and all the other ratepayers end up shouldering that burden. So, we're trying to disincentivize that and would appreciate your approval on this ordinance.
Make a motion that we pass ordinance 13-06, amending the town code of Speedway Chapter 13.20.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 13-06. Are there any questions from the audience? Any from council?
Just one. How frequently do we think this happens?
I don't have the numbers on that. I do know that it was raised to me by my staff that it happens enough. And I don't think it happens a whole lot, but we get our repeat offenders. And so, it's to try to disincentivize that because some folks just do it and they can get away with it for a while and then it's worth the $100 to them. So, we're trying to make it not worth the risk of doing that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes 5-0. Item number nine, ordinance 13-07, an ordinance amending town code of Speedway Chapter 12.30 regarding right-of-way permits. Jacob?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an effort to modernize our right-of-way permitting efforts. What a lot of communities are going to and what we're seeking to do here is they will go to larger users, predominantly utilities or maybe tree service companies that need to operate in right-of-way with somewhat regularity. They go to paying an initial upfront annual fee. In this case, we're proposing $2,000. And then they purchase stickers for every vehicle that would then operate in right-of-way. This ordinance proposes $5 a sticker. And so, what it does is it streamlines the process. Right now, every time IPL goes out and needs to do work or Xfinity, Comcast, or AT&amp;T, whoever, they need to come to Town Hall, explain the issue, pay 50 bucks. That process will still be open to folks that aren't heavy users. But this allows them to streamline to already have that permit, have that vehicle permitted. So, our staff and crew out in the field know that that vehicle has a permit. And it makes it easier for them to tell us what's going on because really, there's, we want them to tell us that they're doing work and when they're doing it. It allows us to alert public safety and just make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do. So, we want that open dialogue and this incentivizes that. Again, this is something that the utilities have been asking for, consistent with what other the communities are doing. And we'd appreciate your adoption.
Mr. President, I move that we approve ordinance 13-07 as presented by Town Manager.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 13-07. Are there any questions from the audience? Any from council?
I have one, a quick one. So, is this just utilities or is this anything that's right-of-way? And I guess one example would be personal or maybe not personal, but tree trimming services companies. I mean, would that fall under this as well?
I believe, no, we're not doing that.
We can, just like, since you can't get up.
What it is is for major utilities, just like IPL, Comcast, AT&amp;T, there are servicing lines all over the place all the time and doing new improvements. It's like on tree services, if they're in town one day, they still need to pull a right-of-way permit. They'll come into the... permit. They'll come into the office. We're not requiring them to do the full-year process unless, like, one service is here once a month and they feel that it benefits them to purchase at one time.
Okay, so they can do one-off permits still?
Yes. Just like our residents, anything that's going on, concrete work, and they need a one-day permit, they just come in and do the same thing that we've done in the past. This is trying to get our major utilities lined up with Joe and John, myself, Rob. We're always talking to the utilities to make sure they have their permits and stuff. This will, we can pull up aside their trucks and see that they are permitted.
Thank you.
One other question. This is, we're trying to stay cost-neutral. We're just simply trying to make it easier for the repeat groups to come in town.
That's the goal, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But theoretically, anybody could sign up. So if you wanted to pay $2,000 just to do right-of-way once, you'd be more than welcome to do so. But the goal really is the heavier users.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ordinance 1307 passes five zero. Item number 10, Resolution 2018-09, a resolution adopting a multi-hazard mitigation plan. Jacob?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have been asked by the City of Indianapolis to adopt a multi-hazard mitigation plan. And I say the City of Indianapolis, I guess more accurately, we've been asked by FEMA, or the county has been asked by FEMA, to adopt a hazard mitigation plan, which keeps the county eligible for disaster relief dollars should there be a disaster. I think Unigov puts us in a little bit of a strange place. Throughout the state, counties are responsible for adopting this and are doing so. I think just kind of belts and suspenders, they would like all the different, all the excluded cities in town to go ahead and also adopt the mitigation plan. We have reviewed the plan and agree with the plan, and so would ask to go ahead and adopt the resolution to make sure that in the event of a disaster, there's no ambiguity about whether or not we're eligible for disaster relief dollars.
Mr. President, I make a motion we approve Resolution 2018-09.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2018-09. Are there any comments from the audience? Any from council? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution 2018-09 passes five zero. Item number 11, approval of claims and utility adjustments. Monty is unable to be here this evening, so we shall look at the claims presented to us dated at the end date of August 10th.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the claims prepared by our court treasurer but presented by you this evening.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the claims as presented by me. Any questions from the audience? Any from council? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Also dated, end date July 12? I'm sorry, yes, no. From the 7th to August 10th. These are utility adjustments that were also presented to us by our court treasurer.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the adjustments from July 7th to August 10th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the utility adjustments as presented. Any questions from the audience? Council? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes five zero. Next up, item number 12, report from our town department supervisors. Tim Gropp, Economic Development. You hear it? Yep, there he is.
Good evening, council. A few updates for you this evening. First thing I'd like to start off with is, I know we've received several questions about what's happening over by Kohl's, so I just wanted to give everyone an update. Kohl's had announced previous, earlier this year, that they would be rightsizing their facility here in Speedway. So I'm talking to Brixmore, they're going from about 90,000 square feet down to 60,000 square feet. Brixmore is pushing them to what's called the dead end, so there, there'll be a gap of about 30,000 square feet between TJ Maxx and the new Kohl's. Brixmore has assured us they definitely have interest in that area, but it's too soon to really do anything on leasing in there. They didn't feel concerned that they'd be able to backfill that area. So the construction going on right now is just adopting that, adapting that building to make it work for two users instead of a single user. So adding a new loading dock on one side, you know, kind of separating utility work, stuff like that. So I don't know what their timeline is at this point, but that's kind of what's going on, is making that a single-use building into a dual-use building. So any questions on that? Everything else is coming along fine there. We had the opening for Five Below, and I think we're really close on Burlington and Ross Dressforless as well. I'll signage it up, and it looks really nice. Next up, just to inform you that we have executed the purchase agreement on the Gilman parcel, which is the last vacant parcel behind DeLara. So it took us a while to get to that purchase agreement. Earlier this year, we had done an RFP and received a few, so the SRC had selected a, it'll be a multi-tenant building, about 30,000 square foot, industrial with some office, light warehousing type uses. Hopefully looks similar to what's in the area now. It should fit in really nice. We're excited about that. The purchase agreement was signed, but we have about a 60-day due diligence. I don't think it'll take 60 days. Everyone's pretty excited to get moving. So hopefully we'll close on that property within the next 60 days and start the process of construction. At this point in the year, I'd be surprised if it got through design and approvals. I would imagine that you'd probably see construction start in spring of 2019 would be my guess. Any questions on that one?
Sorry, real quick, what'd you say was going behind DeLara?
It'll be about a, somewhere in the vicinity of 30,000 square foot multi-tenant building. So you could have, you know, industrial warehouse, light, you know, type building, similar to what you'd see at HomeCoast or OMR in that realm. It's not a single user, it's not a dedicated user, it'll have some flex space, which is good for us as we get leads in. I think this will be a spot, you know, we have to pass on so many opportunities because we don't have anywhere to put them. This will give us a little space to at least compete on some of these projects, so we're excited about that. I was hoping, I had announced at the SRC meeting last month that we'd have an update tonight on the 1300 block and just where we're at with everything going on there. We're not quite ready for that presentation yet, so I'll keep council posted. We'll hope to have the developer that has purchased the other two properties to come and speak with you, but we're not quite there yet. We're still working on some numbers and some projections, and they're still working on exactly what they want to do there. So we should have an update soon. I just wanted to let you know, our hope was to have it tonight, and we just need a little bit more time. Again, we're hoping to see some, something happen that block in the next year as well. So we want to make sure we get it out in front of the public and have ample time to look at what's going to happen there, so. And then on the 2500 block, we had really good input. We continue to have input, so I just want to encourage anyone who has not given us feedback on what they'd like to see and up there at 2500 block redevelopment, which is High School Road and Crawfordsville Road, please let us know. Even last week, we had a phone call and we had an email come in with some suggestions. We're still collecting those. The due diligence period that come back that we are still in has come back and made some tweaks based on that information, and we're still seeing how we can incorporate as many of those comments as possible. We won't be able to do everything up there, but as we move closer to getting final design and engaging in contract talks to get a developer on board, we want to make sure we've heard from everybody we can before we do that. So we appreciate everyone who's reached out to us, but we hope to incorporate as much of that as possible, come back to the council and SRC, kind of show where we're at, and then go from there. But we'd like to, we'd like to keep momentum going, and we'd like to get a developer on board and start that planning process, so hopefully in 2019, we can see some dirt being pushed and some action out there. And I think we're in a good spot to get that done, so. Still a lot of work to do, but we've made good progress, and we do appreciate everyone's input.
One point about the old Circle K, I don't know if you're responsible or someone in the town's responsible, but whoever put up the barriers so the semis couldn't park in there that was turning into a truck stop, so thank you, I don't know who.
Yeah, that was, we were having problems with semis coming in there, and they actually hit the overhang a little bit and caused some problems. So we reached out to our contacts at Circle K, and they understood that that was a liability and a risk, so they were the ones that came out and actually blocked off the lot, but our hope is to get that resolved sooner than later. Any other questions for me at this time? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Next is Police Chief Jim Campbell.
Good evening. As you know, September 9th is Brickyard 400 time, so, you know, we're back into race mode. We have a Public Safety Committee meeting on the 21st, and it's at 1:30 at the Brickyard Inn. It's an opportunity if somebody from the public has questions, you know, if they want to know more about, you know, the event itself, you know, there's representatives from every aspect of, you know, of the event, and, you know, they're always welcome. The other one is, we, you know, we have our Citizens Academy. We, in fact, have a kind of an overfill, but, you know, if anybody did not get their name in or are still interested, you know, we're going to, we'll keep a list of people that may want to do it in the future, but that class will start on August 28th. So, number nine. And lastly, I, you know, back-to-school time's always an interesting time for a lot of folks, but I just want to point out, our day shift went to the elementary schools on opening day and did the high fives and spent some time with the kids, and, you know, I just think, again, it was commendable for what they did. I think it, again, demonstrated our partnership with the Speedway schools and, you know, just the interest level in letting the kids know that we're there, so. That's it.
Questions? Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Next up, Fire Chief Bob Fishburne.
Good evening. We've posted all of our information for the Brickyard with our guys and our, you know, working with Chief Campbell. Those meetings that he talked about are great for public to go. You know, chief doesn't have all the answers, but he puts people together at those meetings that they can do it. Couple of things, our, a lot of projects are coming due that Tim was talking about in Burlington. We do the final there tomorrow, just to let you know. So we're trying to, trying to help John, send out good thoughts to him, and trying to take some things off his plate by having people call us directly and him not having to mess with all of that, but he's also been doing a great job of coordinating all of that stuff. So we've been sending our crews out. We're in a unique situation with redevelopment where our crews can actually go and pre-plan these buildings before drywall's up, and they can see, you know, sprinkler head hookups, stand pipes where they're coming down in these runs, and actually, you know, put their eyes on it. So our battalions are spending time on these sites, and the general contractors are very, very helpful, and they actually like it because they may see something that saves them money on a project. I was at Willshaw today, meeting with Jay from CR.
CRG.
Yeah. And they've got like eight balconies that they're going to have to sprinkler, and, you know, we talked about where those needed to go and how they would fit into code, and, you know, their soffit is about three inches under what code demands, but they're very proactive, so we're trying to help with some of those. One of the other benefits, we sent, police and fire put about 10 people together through a CPR instructor training, and we're starting to utilize that. We've just last week went down and certified all of the teachers and caregivers at Speedway Christian Preschool, and we want the community to know that they can call and set some of those things up. Now, there's a cost associated with it, there's no question, but both departments have CPR instructors that are certified now. That also saves us money when we have to recertify our own people, and Captain Deardorff and Assistant Chief Milhorne kind of put that together, and we had really good participation. Guys volunteered, you know, to sign up, because then they can utilize those skills elsewhere to make money, you know, doing something else. And IEMS supplies us, you know, the materials to do that at a very minimal cost, so we're starting to utilize some of that. And other than that, just, I love being back in Speedway. Been laying my head on a pillow here for about six weeks now, and just appreciate being back here. And, you know, tonight after the meeting, I only have about a nine-tenths of a mile drive home, so.
Welcome home, buddies.
He's on a watch list. I might bring him in.
Hey, I'm going to the Citizens Academy. We'll wear two bass hounds.
Public Works Director Wendell Walters.
Good evening, council. Just some updates on the utility departments. Wastewater, all the general maintenance is ongoing as all time, all the time. Norm is looking at using the methane gas to do some in-house operations of the plant, so that's in works, and he will keep us updated on that, so that might be a good investment there to save us some cost. On the water department's side, the Meadowwood tank has been painted and valve work has been done. They will start filling the tank and cleaning it this week, and then everything will go back online hopefully by end of week, and that tank will be back in the storage mode. The fencing will also be done this week. That's redoing all the fencing around the tank and the gate area. And of course, there are general maintenance ongoing too. On the street department's side, they're always prepping for the events, getting ready for the golf match that's going to happen, I think starts Thursday through the weekend, and just different things that go on in all their general maintenance, street sweeping, painting, mowing. And just on our community crossing grants that we've been lucky on the last three years of receiving, they have opened that process again this year. We have started work on that to start trying to get some of that funding. We will use 2018 projects to go against that grant, roughly $395,000 will be put in, and that'll be a 50-50 match. So hopefully we get that in, and we should be notified by November on that if we're 2018 projects, we still have some punch list items. We gave them an extension on time because they have to tear out some concrete on Cadillac Drive, redo that, and then come back and pave. So their 30-day extension will get them up to September 3rd, but they will be working at the end of this week and next week, so hopefully they meet schedule and get that completed on that part. 16th and Main, a lot of different activity going on there. We've got IPL trying to get in, do the repair work. We've got Citizens Gas, it's got to abandon a line for the USAC building. USAC main tap on the water is being completed, so we're waiting for street repair there. So the next couple of weeks is going to be a busy another intersection, and as soon as we get confirmed dates, we'll be putting notice out for public safety and the general public to travel around that area. As always, be careful in the project areas. So the left turn lane, we got notice that they've moved that project up for us, so we're going to bid December of this year. We're going to go to construction, I'm sorry, the left turn lane is on Crawfordsville Road. This gets us into the small shopping area on the south side there by Thornton's and Firestone. This is something that we've been working on for a couple of years, and it had it at 22.
22 with them.
22, and they've worked with us to keep moving it up, so we're going to get it bid and start work in the spring, and this is going to be a quick project. We are scheduling it from March to May 1st, so weather dependent, we'll get it done and be ready, so. And just roughly on that project, that's $132,000 project. We have a $58,000 investment on that on our part, but we've identified it, councilors have identified it, everybody's seen it, that it's a needed project, so. it, councillors have identified it, everybody's seen it, that it's a needed project, so we'll get that completed. The BNO Trail will be completed by September first. They are digging, concrete work going on, alley repairs, everything's in motion. Of course, we were gonna try and pave by end of week, but we got a lot of rain coming in, so that will probably push us off about a week, but we're getting there. We started the last phase from Lynnhurst West to the park, then we'll move from that area to Worth to do that parking lot, and then everything should start coming together. If I don't have it by September fifteenth, somebody's gonna be upset with me.
Right.
So, we will get it, we will get it usable. So, that kind of catches us up real quick, a lot of different things going on, and everybody be patient, and we'll get there eventually. Questions? Yes, sir.
The Turn Lane, westbound Crawfordsville to Speedway Plaza, or whatever it's called, where the get-go is.
Market Place.
Yeah, the Market Place. The city was supposed to come in and mark that, it's not been done.
That has been moved, they didn't feel comfortable with their crews doing it, so they put it on a contract, one of their paving contracts, it has striping on it, so as soon as that contract goes into striping, they'll move that crew over to finish that out.
Okay.
And if they don't, I'll be back on the phone.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Quick note, Wendell's being modest on the, the comment with the MPO and, and working us into higher the schedule. I mean, it, it requires him and Rob and, and the engineers we work with to be on the ball and able to respond quickly when the MPO says, can you move this up? Can you shift things around? So, good job on doing that, Wendell, so we can move those projects up, get those dollars in, get, you know, new grant applications in, so just wanted to, just wanted to clarify that.
And he does have a part in it, too.
Yeah. To comment on that, didn't we go to the city for that several years ago and they turned us down?
Yes, we, we did approach them. I think it was when you were president and stuff, we did approach them and request that.
So, they approved it because Jeff's president, is that what you're saying, sir?
I think so.
Very likely.
I couldn't, I couldn't get a smile out of you, and Jeff smiled, so.
Yeah, that's what it was.
We moved it up. Thank you.
Thanks, Wendell. Next up, Parks and Recreation, Tammy Smith.
Good evening. First of all, I was gonna talk about the concerts they're over with for the season, and they went very well. Pleased to say, we averaged well over three hundred people at, at the attendance. One, that was about four hundred. There was a couple that were just over two fifty, but the majority were between three and three fifty, so that was a lot of fun. So, I want to just thank, again, all the sponsors that ended up coming through for us to make those concerts free to the community and so successful. I also wanted to thank the volunteers in policing. I think that's a great program. They were there at each of the concerts, and just them walking around, I think, was really nice. Before each concert, I tried to remind people that there's no smoking and to pick up, you know, trash when you're done, and, you know, I don't have a problem going and telling somebody, reminding them, hey, there's no smoking, but it was nice that the VIPs were there, and they took care of that for me, so. And as a matter of fact, I'm gonna be attending the Citizens Academy with my husband this time, so looking forward to that. And then, lastly, I wanted to thank the community members for coming out to all the concerts. It was great to see so many friends and neighbors and families and coworkers, and it was a lot of fun every, every week. I looked forward to it. For this fall, I'm gonna do a tie-dye shirt project that's actually coming up next week, so if anybody's interested in that, any of the, the kids or adults, we're gonna do that here at Leonard Park at Shelter One on Wednesday evening, August twenty-second, from six to eight PM. They can register online on the town's website under Parks and Recreation, or they can contact me at the office or by email. And I'm also going to offer a Fall Break Camp this year. I'm gonna give that a try. It's not, it's gonna be different than the summer camps. It's not gonna be sports-related or, you know, something specific. It's just going to be fun, hour-and-a-half sessions, activities, crafts, and games, something for the kids who don't go out of town for vacation. Maybe they'll have something to look forward to, and again, it'll be here at Shelter One at Leonard Park, and so looking forward to that, to see and how that's received.
Tammy, that'll be during the, the school's break that week?
Yes, yeah, during fall, so it's October fifteenth through the nineteenth, and it'll be during the day.
Thank you.
And then, the trees, unfortunately, the spring was not good to us with that cold April and then the hot May. We weren't able to do any spring plantings of our tribute trees, but we are planning on doing those this fall, and as of right now, Speedway Home Helpers is going to be participating in Indy Due Day on Friday, September twenty-eighth, and they've got some corporate volunteers, and so we invite other volunteers, if you're interested, to contact us. We're gonna try to start our planting, hopefully finish as well, on Friday, September twenty-eighth. We have forty-two trees that need to be planted, thirty-two are for metalwood and ten are for Leonard, so we're looking forward to getting those in the ground, and that's all I have today.
That's awesome. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. Item number thirteen, report from our town manager, Jacob.
Anything, Mr. President? So, folks at home, if you're looking for plans for next week and looking for something to do, I've got a pretty sweet offer for you. Tuesday, Wednesday night, both nights starting at six o'clock, we will have budget hearings, so the department heads will be presenting their budgets to council, going through line by line and all the gory details. It is open to the public, so you're welcome to join us. I actually kind of like this stuff, but I realize it's a little dry, but should be a good conversation, and if, like I said, if you're interested, come and join us. The other thing I want to discuss is, I don't usually comment on rumors, but I'll make an exception tonight. There, there's a pretty strong pervasive rumor about the town acquiring the PNC branch building. Of course, we, this, this group passed a resolution giving me permission to go through and, and continue to have conversations with PNC as well as order appraisals and that sort of thing. I am very happy to report that those conversations have been positive up to this point, and, and they're going in a good direction. I just want to kind of clarify that it is, it's far from a done deal at this point. There's definitely some work to do. There's some off-ramps for, for both us and PNC at this point, and so I just want to be clear that, that, that transaction is, is far from ramped up. I, I appreciate that a lot of people are excited about it. I know people have been having an eye on that building right smack dab in the middle of Speedway for, for many years. I feel the pressure to get this, this done. I feel it, but we're only gonna do it if, if it makes financial sense and, and makes sense for, for us to move forward. So, just want to do address that. Like I said, I don't usually talk about rumors, but this one I know's been going around quite a bit. I know it's exciting, it travels quickly, but just want to clarify, we're not, we're not there yet. I look forward to providing some more updates in the future, hopefully positive, but at this point, we're not there yet, and that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Jacob. That's a fine report. Next up, report from our town attorney, Bob Clutter.
I have nothing to report tonight, Mr. President.
I do have to tell you, you earned your paycheck this evening. Well done. Thank you. Item number fifteen is report from council members. We'll start with Councilor Eileen Fisher.
Just this evening, I want to just re-encourage the, any individuals within our community and even within, you know, owners of businesses, you know, counselors here, reach out to your counselor if you have a concern, if you wanted to sit down and have coffee with them, give them, you know, some advice or whatever. We'd love to hear from you. I know I have a, a resident here this evening, but we're gonna sit down with her along with the police chief and try to get her concerns taken care of, so we want to, we definitely want to hear from you, so please, reach out to your counselors. We're all here for you guys.
Well said. Thank you. Councilor Jason Delisle.
Nothing for me tonight.
Councilor Gary Rakes.
Just a couple of things real quick. Just re-proving a few different events, maybe the closure of portions of roads and that type of thing just continues to point towards the success of our town. Our whole goal many years ago, more than a decade ago, was to attract people to our town. It would then attract people, you know, to come and visit our town and do more than, than just go to the race, but to come and have dinner, come and participate in, in different events, come to our parks, et cetera. So, we oftentimes think of Main Street, but when I look at, at the report that Tammy made and the results that we're getting in our parks, when I look at the progress out by the interstate and the number of people that make it really difficult to have lunch at two or three new restaurants that are right there, three or four new restaurants, literally, the parking lots jam-packed full, that's telling me that, that the things that we've invested in over the last fifteen years are, are working, and I'm encouraged by that. So, I thank everybody for their participation in different ways over those years. The last thing, Beverly Catter Henry asked me to yield some time. I think she's gonna come and, and clarify anything that Wendell had to say, and I'm teasing. I don't know what she's gonna say other than specific to the, the trails.
Coming up, Speedway, the town of Speedway, the BNO Trail ribbon cutting up there.
Straight in front of you now, Beth.
They told me putting it over there.
Okay.
There you go. The grand opening of the BNO Trail. It's, we started this project in two thousand and seven when we got organized, and we came to the town council and asked for your support, and, and you gave us your support, and now in two thousand and eighteen, the trail's gonna be completed. So, we're gonna have a grand opening ceremony. The ceremony starts at nine-thirty, and when the ribbon gets cut, it's gonna start a five-k fundraising event that'll be timed, or family walk. We also are including the bicycle ride. The bicycles will go east, and the runners and walkers will go west, so, but this, the money raised from this event will start the fundraising for the Eagle Creek Trail. So, it took us eleven years to build the PNE and the BNO, and hopefully, we'll get the Eagle Creek Trail done sooner, but this is an invitation for everybody to come out and join us September fifteenth, at least for the ceremony, or to give your support to building the Eagle Creek Trail. Is it? Any questions?
Others can, can make comments as well. I'm sure they, they echo these thoughts. We thanked you in different ways in the past, but I, I can't wait to see the smile on your face in September.
It's growing. It's growing. It's been a long time coming, and it's just exciting.
It has, but you've done a phenomenal job of, of sticking with it and recruiting people of all types and, and ways to help contribute.
All the way from our lumberjacks that like cutting down trees to the people that like planting little flowers along the finished road.
I, I gave you a quick story, and I'll make it, make it quick. Yesterday, got up pretty early, just couldn't sleep, and my dog said, we're going for a walk, so we went for a walk, and went over to the park and then on the, on the trail and walked all the way to Zorer's, and just kept on going and came back, and, and the trail's not officially open yet, but, you know, what a great thing.
Pretty exciting.
And there's four runners, all of them wanted to stop and pet the dog, and it was just the opportunity to meet different folks and, and see people driving to our town to actually use our trail, not just those that live in our town, is exactly what I was talking about earlier.
Great.
So, it's working, and, and people like yourself that have worked decades to make this happen.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah.
See you then, September fifteenth.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Next up, Vice President David Lindsay.
Just one thing, for those that may have forgotten, the high school softball team won a state championship this year. They did. And the, my, my daughter was a member of that team, and they had their banquet, they had to have it in July because of schedules from all the girls, but that was held at the Brickyard Crossing, and I wanted to thank the Speedway Booster Club and the Lions Club for their help in paying for that. The Lions Club paid a major portion of that. They, they really stepped up to the plate, and I want to thank them for that. It really was, it was a great event, the girls greatly appreciated, and I want to thank the Lions Club and the Boosters Club for that. That's all I have.
All right. I have nothing to add this evening. Lot of great things happening, so let's keep the momentum going. It is eight oh four. I call this meeting adjourned.